Just told me to order for these stands to the wooden ledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The record reports that all board members are present this evening. Let's pull report, see how we have no student reps tonight because of schoolwork. You go first.
Sure. Lake Country Power is sponsoring Rachel's Challenge. And so what they do is they give back to their community, Lake Country Power, and they sponsor this Rachel's Challenge. And what it's about, it's about Rachel Jo Scott was the first victim of the Columbine shootings. And so they come and they do a presentation. It's an hour-long presentation at the high school. They'll be at the junior high and also at the elementary. And it inspires the students to replace acts of violence, bullying, or negativity with acts of respect, kindness, and compassion. So they'll be in our district on October 12th and on October 11th. I think they're going to be at the junior high. And there's also a parent presentation from seven to eight that will be at our auditorium. Seven to eight, I believe, on the 12th here in the auditorium, and that's on the 11th in Mr. Gripen Troggs' building. From six to seven would be the parents and students can also attend the afternoon one. And also, the month of October is College Knowledge Month. And during the month of October, many of our students can go online and there's a free application fee. Usually you have to pay up to $75 to apply for colleges. And it is free for the month of November, October, for most of the colleges, not all of them. And Mrs. Forsman did send that all out to our seniors so that they can apply. Our school also, at the high school, will have a college wear Wednesdays. So every Wednesday in the month of October, our staff are invited to wear the sweatshirts or t-shirts or jackets from where they went to college, just to support the concept of kids going to college.
I tried mine on and didn't fit real well. You're gonna have to pass.
Okay, over Gilbert campus, just wanted to thank the board for the staff development day we had last week, Wednesday. I know the teachers were, got together and we started looking at goal setting, teacher evaluation process and reviewed that. And teachers are really working hard and all on setting some new goals for the upcoming year, whether it's student learning goals or personal goals for themselves. We had about thirty, actually a few more than thirty kids try out for the fall play. The fall play in Gilbert is called One in a Million this year. And there are twenty students who made the cast in grades five through eight. And some of the other kids that tried out, I think, will be helping out behind the scenes. So that's a positive thing. They'll be coming up in November. Knowledge Bowl is getting started. We have twenty-three junior high kids signed up in seventh and eighth grade. There's also some elementary teams, but I was not able to get the numbers yet for that. Then also, just wanted to mention, thank the, again, the staff and all the people in Gilbert, they're doing a great job getting the year started off. Staff's willing to help out with anything that we need. So that's it from Gilbert.
Couple of quick announcements. Pitcher days on October 11th this year for the Franklin. Second grade's going to Mr. Ed's Farm on October 7th. Bear care is available from 6:30 to 7:30 in the morning and 3:30, or actually after school. So three o'clock to six in the evenings. We have switched the fee schedule back to the way it was after Ms. Sebo tried sabotaging it before she left last year. And I heard one little chuckle from Andrew over there. What we tried doing is we tried going to just a base rate for, if you were there, first half and second half, rather than hourly rate. And that didn't go over real well, so we went back to the hourly thing. Anyway, a couple of things. Ms. Perko started, she, we hired her at the last board meeting and she started her SMART program this week. If you remember back, a couple of years she came into the board and showed us what that program means. SMART stands for Stimulating Maturity Through Accelerated Reading Training. Used to be called Brain Gym, Boost Up, lots of other things, but essentially it's exercises that kids do in the morning to get themselves ready to learn. It's a pretty cool thing that all of our classes in the Franklin are doing right now. She also goes over to Early Childhood and the Forests Program once a week and works with them as well. We're just finishing up work with Marshall Brenner Associates. They're the ones we contracted to help us update Power School so we can use it to its full extent. And they're currently working on primary report cards. We have done paper pencil report cards for K through two for a long time. Hopefully by first quarter, we'll be all online, so parents will be able to look at those every day like everybody else does. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Five, four, and all. Agenda additions or deletions?
I have a few. If you look at 10.5, I have a couple additions to the extracurriculars. You can see Hannah Bingham as AM Playground Bus Duty. Emily Kelson is a Playground Aid, Becky Carey is Patrol Advisor, and Beth Bitman is PM Bus Duty. And that completes all of the positions that we have at the Franklin, so we've got a full load. I know we're still looking for a few over in Gilbert, but I snagged the ones that were out there, so we'll see. We're still a little short on Playground Duty over in Gilbert. 10.7, approved appointment of Michelle Walters to a Paraprofessional A position on the Gilbert campus. This is in the Early Childhood Program for Special Ed, ECSE. And on that same note, on 10.8, accept the resignation of Carrie Klockowski from her ECSE Para position.
Should those be changed to eight and nine because we have a seven?
Well, actually Amanda Wenison under 10.3 is the one that's actually replacing Carrie. Michelle Walters is a new position for a new student.
We have a 10.7 on the original agenda.
No, we have a 10.7 on the original agenda?
Oh, yes. Now I hear ya. 10.8, 10.9 would be the next one. And then finally, 11.2, here I will give a real brief report. Right, Katie?
Right.
No, kidding, I'm on that. On the, on the facilities. That's what we have.
Thank you. 6.0, visitor input?
I believe we have a representative from Chickagami.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Nardine and I'm the Vice President, Acting President of Chickagami. And basically, we come every month just to kind of give you an update on where we're at with our potential facility move. And I guess the first thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna hand around a flyer for our Family Fun Night tomorrow. We're praying for sunshine. It's gonna be outdoors, so I'll let everyone have one of those. And if you know of some people that might want to come, they're gonna have a lot of different things. We have silent auction, games for the kids, all of that kind of stuff. And some of our auction items are Weekend Stay at the Villa at the Ridge, a camp scholarship to our Camp Chickagami, ski passes, gift certificates, and get baskets from area businesses that have been willing to donate toward it. Our goal is to use that money to help with relocation, so. The other update that we have at this time is that we are just completing a pre-application to the USDA to access facility development funds for childcare facilities. So we're in the process of doing that. And basically, we're exploring the feasibility of other sites with potential for us to relocate to. We've been meeting quite regularly, I would say at least twice a month, between the executive board and the actual full board to try and figure out how we can best meet the needs of the kids in Evolith and our surrounding area with childcare. It's like always been kind of a ebb and flow of trying to figure out where and how and all those kinds of things. So we're, we're still optimistic and we're still hopeful of trying to pull everything together. I don't know if you guys have any questions or concerns, anything that I can try and address?
No, it's just good to see that you're trying.
Yeah, thank you. We keep going. So, um, thank you so much for your time this evening. And again, please pray for rain tomorrow because, or not rain, excuse me, for sunshine. Please pray for sunshine. I'm looking outside and it's already raining. Please pray for sunshine because we're all outdoors tomorrow and we'll be over by the playground area if anyone wants to join us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Is that all we have registered?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on, 7.0, approve the agenda. Need a motion and a second for that?
So moved.
Motion Sean Lob?
Support.
Support by Generalini. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 8.0, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of Monday, September 12th, 2016. We need a motion and a second.
I'll move.
Motion Putzel.
Support.
Support by Peterson. Right? Okay. Any other questions? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I abstained since I was not at the meeting.
Okay, so noted. 9.0, approve the Business Office Affairs. Approve the Treasurers' Report for the Second Check Writing in September.
All we have for this one is just disbursements of $225,772.45. I make a motion to accept this report.
One second.
Support.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.0 Personnel. 10.1, approve the Early Childhood Teaching Assignment of Jennifer Crowell. Right?
It's for school rating as threes. We run that program two days a week. We have two classrooms this year. We only had one last year, so this is new. So it'll be fourteen hours a week for those two days.
Okay, we need a motion and a second.
I'll move.
Motion Peterson.
Support.
Support by Putzel. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.2, approve the .23 FTE Elementary Music Assignment of Ladonna Mooster.
This is for music over at the Nelson Sheen, the fifth and sixth grade.
Need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion Sean Lob?
Support.
Support by Chad. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.3, 10.3, excuse me, approve the following Early Childhood Education Aids. There's a few of them. Deb Toivella, 28 hours a week as an aide. Cheryl Peterson, an aide for 28 hours a week. Yvonne Larson, aide for 26 hours a week. Carrie Hawes, aide for 26 hours a week. Kathleen Kangus, aide for 10 hours a week. Amanda Murfin, six hours a week as an aide. Amanda Wenison, Para, 28.75 hours per week. And somewhere, I've got some more.
That's all.
That's all?
That's it.
Okay. Got them all this time. Okay. We need a motion and a second to approve, unless someone wants to pull somebody out.
So moved.
Motion by Sean Lob?
Support.
Support by Peterson. Any other questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.4, appoint Tom Prentz to the Assistant Network Administrator position. Need a motion and a second.
Also, we appoint Tom Prentz in the position of Assistant Network Administrator?
Did you get one of them?
One of them.
Okay. It was close.
Oh.
Okay, any other discussion?
Well, I just wanna know where, did we agree on the salary on this particular deal?
I think it was...
That's what the last word I got from the board was, we were gonna go with 30. And Tom was okay with that.
Okay.
I wasn't sure if that was the consensus or not. And also, is this gonna be a contract position or is this gonna go?
Needs to be, yes.
So, I guess that was my, if it's gonna be a contract position, then typically when we hire them and then negotiate or we kind of?
We can do that.
I think we should do that to keep everything clean.
Okay.
Yeah? Anyone else? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Five, two. Okay. 10.5, approve the extracurricular positions for 2016-17. Chris, Chad on the math team.
That's a resignation.
Oh, that's a resignation? Okay. And Jessica Forsman, IRYA Advisor is a resignation. So we need Angie Kemp on the math team, approve her. And Tim Strasser, IRYA Advisor, approval also. So should we break these up?
And then there's additional.
Then there's some additional ones as well.
What do I do with it?
Duh.
Ah, here we go. Well, we should take the resignations separate.
Okay.
Okay, I would like to do that. So I need a motion for the resignations of Chris, Chad, and Jessica Forsman from their positions.
I'll move.
Okay, we have a motion.
Support.
And a second from Peterson. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, approve Angie Kemp, Tim Strasser, Hannah Bingham as an AM Playground Bus, for Bus Duty, 12:45 a day. Emily Kelson, Playground Aid for 9:50 an hour. Becky Carey, Franklin Safety Patrol Advisor for $820, that's for the year, I believe. And then Beth Bitman is a PM Playground and Bus Duty for 8:30 a day. We need a motion and a second.
I'll move.
Motion Peterson?
Support.
Support by Generalini. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.6, recall Selena Lundstrom to Paraprofessional A position.
Should we, it says Gilbert Campus on your information letter, but we actually had another student move in and it'll actually be the Evolith Campus. She'll be in the Franklin now. So there is one in the Gilbert Campus that is coming up. It's 10.9. Nope, 10.8.
Okay. Need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion Sean Lob? No, second by 40. We'll get you in there. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.7, approve lane change for Lee Zika from MA plus 10 to MA plus 20. Need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion Sean Lob?
Support.
Support by Peterson. Any questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.8, approve the appointment of Michelle Walters to a Paraprofessional A position for 5.5 hours a day on the Gilbert Campus. This is on the Gilbert Campus?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanna check. Okay, as for the ECSE?
No, actually I misspoke. Mr. Gripen Trogg just sent me a note on the violence. This is actually the one that we were originally gonna hire for Selena. Selena was in that position. She's going to Evolith and this person is filling that spot over in Gilbert.
Okay. We still need a motion and a second.
I'll move.
Motion by Putzel. I'll second it. Any other questions? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.9, accept the resignation of Carrie Klockowski from her ECSE Para position.
And this one was actually kind of out of order, but Amanda Wenison would be the replacement for this one. And 10.3.
Okay, we need a motion and a second.
I'll move.
Motion Putzel?
Support.
Support by Sean Lob? Any other questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, where is it? New business. 11.1, certify to propose 16 payable 17 levy.
Andrew, you have anything you wanna add?
Just like every year, this is the process that we go through with the levy that we ask the board to certify it at the maximum. It is still undergoing changes through the MDE and then we'll have a finalized number in December at the Truth and Taxation Meeting. So we ask you to authorize it at maximum.
So what is the maximum total that we have?
Actually, it could change even by Fri, still by Friday, but currently it's at $692,188.
Okay, it's that one?
That one. Yes. The one that was handed out previously.
Revised one.
It's already been revised.
Okay. Okay, need a motion and a second. So moved.
Second.
Second by 40. This does not mean that it's gonna stay there. We do this all the time. Sometimes it's higher, sometimes it's lower. It will eventually always be lower.
Yes.
At the maximum, yes. Yep. Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. 12.0, I'm sorry, 11.2. Katie, you're up. All right. Now we gotta open up the lens and wind us. I'm moving.
All right, let's shift.
It's even color.
I know.
All you had to do is go to Boabak and save some live trees.
Thank you.
So Jeff had asked us to take a look at after conversations about being able to move the student population to the Evolith Campus. And so what we did is worked with the district in scheduling the existing spaces. So if you remember, we go back to that utilization chart that we put together back a couple months ago that had all the pink boxes. And it showed that mom, there's a multiple number of rooms on this campus. 21% utilization rate. And so what we did is went back and we reprogrammed those spaces to see if we could get those, you know, zero to 20 percent, not 75 to 85 percent for utilization rate. So what that would mean is that there'll have to be some remodeling that would have to take place in order for that to happen. But kind of the quick story is, is that we think that we could fit pretty much every class except for the industrial tech because that's more of a specialized space that this campus just doesn't have. And there's really not a lot of extra space to do remodel to take that footprint. So that potentially could be an addition to the facility. But what I'll do is walk through the areas that I think would be remodeled first to give you an idea of where these kids would go and how we would make them fit into the existing space. And then the end slide shows the graphic of, you know, a potential if we needed to add on space for the industrial tech. So we'll start with the Franklin Elementary. This would be the first floor. The areas that are highlighted would be areas that would need to be remodeled or would, we would be proposing to remodel at this point in time. So what this does is basically takes the first floor and opens it up for early childhood. So you've got your threes and fours that would be located on the main level. You can see in the bottom two corners, because of the size of the classrooms needed for those programs, we would take down a wall between those two classrooms in the corner and create one large classroom for both sides. And then I've also highlighted the workroom and lounge area because you'll see when I get to the second floor, we would have to take that teacher's lounge space and turn it into an educational classroom space. So that may have to be remodeled a little bit to accommodate what's happening on the second floor. So this would basically become your early threes and fours. The light gray markings, if you can see it on your printouts, that's what those classrooms are serving today. So you can kind of see how we're changing from the way that they're set up today to the way they could potentially be set up in the future. So here's the second floor. The area on the left-hand side where I have the kindergarten classrooms located, that is existing activity room space. So if you walked up there right now, there's a stage in the back, just kind of an open space, kind of a nice space for an elementary classroom or class space to have for just kind of those areas that you kind of need to get the wiggles out. But if we did have to do some accommodation for classrooms, I think we could turn that wing into two classrooms. And then you can see in the bottom left-hand corner where the existing teacher lounge is located, we would repurpose that into educational space. So the second level then would be able to accommodate first, second, third grade, and The third floor, I don't think we would need to do a lot of remodeling. Media Center would stay the same. We've got the lab space that would be connected to it currently. And then there's an additional computer lab that you can see I added future flex room depending on where computers go. And if that lab space is necessary, that would be an easy spot to remodel into a traditional classroom space. So if you ever had a flex up and down, that might be a nice area to take into consideration. So you could see then that that third floor would be able to accommodate fourth, fifth, and sixth grade with very minimal remodeling, if any.
May I ask a question?
Yep.
So this is all based on a strict three-section school, right?
Mm-hmm.
There's no, other than that one flex room?
Correct.
There's no, hey, if there's 70 kids, we're gonna overload classrooms?
Yes. Yep.
Okay.
So the high school, we looked at the same concept. Again, areas highlighted in yellow are areas that we would look at potentially doing a remodel to. So we'll start in the bottom left-hand corner where we've got science. I've got science slash health. So that's a, that room existing has a mobile wall. So we'd have to build in a real wall to separate those two classrooms. And then, of course, accommodate them appropriately for science, you know, so if there's water outlets that need to be added to make that a science room, we would have to take a peek at that. Then along the center wing, we've got the conference room and the principal. So we talked about flipping those. Currently, the principal sits down more towards the commons. We would move them up so that they would have view of the entrance in and out, so there'd be a little bit more of a security feature associated with that. So that would have some remodeling space with it. And then you can see I added fax in the bottom right-hand corner there. That space is probably tight for a fax room. Right now, there are fax, that's located in Gilbert, is a much larger space. But we have been doing kind of a multiple classroom where we've got mobile tables, all the utilities that run the outskirts of the classroom. So it could be tight. I think it could work depending on how you want to use and teach that space, but, so that's where we've got it located at this point. The second floor just basically gets kind of a reshuffle of classrooms. So you can see we've just relabeled math and English rooms would remain up there, social studies, so those just basically remain the same. There would not have to be a lot of remodeling that would have to take place. It would just be relocating of teachers. And then I also put the Fine Arts and Gym located on the sheet as well to show that there would not be any... And then I also put the fine arts and gym located on the sheet as well to show that there would not be any remodeling in those two areas. They would remain just the way they are. The third floor, I have the media center highlighted in yellow and I don't have anything that would necessarily be dedicated to that space. But just the pure size of it on a traditional high school campus is probably larger than it needs to be. I think if we did need some classroom space or if there was a computer lab that needed to be relocated, we could certainly take a look at that media center space and maybe utilize it in a little different configuration that it is now. That might be a little bit more feasible. We might be able to get a little more square footage out of there. So I did highlight it as an area that we could look at for remodel. Then the last slide that we've taken a look at, as I had stated earlier, is that there really is no space for technology. I should go back that through the space study that we looked at for the Franklin and for the high school, the lower level of both buildings were not included in our space study just because from an educational standpoint, you know, that space down there is not ideal. You do have space. We really needed something. We could take a peek at that, but we tried to keep that off the table, but it is still space that you would be maintaining. So that being said, if we did bring tech ed over to this existing campus, I think we would need to look at putting in addition onto the building. Again, this is just a real, you know, we're at the 10, 20,000 foot view looking down, but this makes some sense to go where the yellow box is highlighted. Just because if you remember some of the kind of long-term plans, the core area where the existing pool and, you know, the older part of the building, that would probably be the area that would go first. So we don't want to connect it to that side of the facility. We want to keep it up closer to the Franklin because potentially that would be the area that we would want to keep. And it would be attached to the new gym in the commons area. So long-term, you know, I think it makes sense to kind of keep it in that core area. So that building box on the floor plan shows, you know, 6,000 to 8,000 square feet of tech ed space that could be added to the campus. Thoughts or questions?
Katie? What kind of money are we looking at if we go ahead with all of these recommendations?
To do the remodeling that we've got highlighted in the Franklin and the high school, just from a square foot cost standpoint without, you know, really diving into it, I think it's probably about 1.2 million to do all of the work. The addition itself, you know, depending on the square footage that we would need to add, you know, 6,000 to 8,000 square feet could be another 1.5 to do in addition to those buildings.
Looking at 3 to 4 million?
Yeah. Yep, I think so. The other thing that I think is important to note as we go through is that this rearranging of classrooms, you know, and moving kids around does not encounter any of the, you know, facility, long-term facility costs that would be associated with maintaining this campus. You know, that would just be the cost to do the short-term remodeling, if that makes sense.
And then we, your way, we're not reducing anything, so we're still assuming our current day operating costs, basically, right?
You would. So the, you would be, you would be reducing because if you were able to relocate from, you know, if you were to relocate the kids from the Gilbert campus.
Oh, I'm just saying this, this property.
This, this property, probably not. Correct. Yes. Correct.
And this is, I mean, even from school readiness all the way through sixth grade, it's all three sections.
Yes.
Like last year, we had.
No room for expansion.
No. I mean, there's only two school readiness classes. I mean, last year we had three. I mean, we had a flex with the threes and infants. Last year's two with some ECFE stuff, so I mean, there.
Yeah. The instruction was to look at bare minimum remodeling. There are faults with it. There certainly is. I mean, if one class bulged, then you needed a four-section in any of those grades anymore?
Well, that's where we're at this year. Fifth grade has four sections.
We have two grades that have four. No, three, three grades that have four sections right now.
Oh, there's some in Franklin, isn't there?
Both the ones in Gilbert do, and third grade has four.
So they don't all fit on this campus? Even at the way we are right now?
What if they started from kindergarten up, basically?
Without remodeling over here?
Yeah, there definitely would have to be, you know, minimal remodel in order to make some of those.
You don't have any shop classes or anything at all here unless you put in a new addition.
Right. You just don't have the spa- you know, you don't have the, you don't have the space, the square footage for it, you know? Even the fax program coming over, I think we could make it work, but just because the sheer nature of the size of that equipment coming over, you don't have any. Incorporate that. Right. Basement.
Did you look at building an addition on above the science wing?
We did. We talked about that. It could be an option. It wouldn't necessarily work wonderful for the tech ed space again because your ceiling heights are so high. So you're not, you're almost building a two-level story on top of the one. I don't know if that structure is made for that.
That structure was designed for a second story.
Yep. So then the other option, well, the other reason that we kind of shied away from that is kind of going back to, you know, the big picture. If you did want to come and do something major on the Evolith campus, that's kind of at the end of the world because we kind of looked at taking down that centerpiece. So to build on that side of the campus, you know, we thought, well, does it make sense to put it over there? Or do we try to kind of keep things in that center core and keep that the new part of your campus? Certainly for classrooms, if we needed space, you know, it would make some sense to build over that science area. But I think it would be a tough spot to build industrial tech.
Because initially, some of us on the board at that time wanted to put the second story on and put the, all the shops underneath there. And then put the science wing above that. But we didn't have the money at that time. It was, at that time, it was only a million dollars difference. Now, it's more than that. Well, we ask for bare bones.
Yeah, I think this is your minimum, you know, we could see. And it's tight, you know, your, some of your spaces will feel it as far as gym usage and cafeteria, you know, those spaces that we didn't really touch on. I mean, to grab those other kids, again, I think it's doable and scheduling would have to be adjusted to allow that. But, you know, can it happen? The answer is yes. The remodeling, that 1.2 that we threw out, could it be a little bit less than that? I think so. But just kind of fresh shot from the dark, kind of the big picture view, I think that that's where you would be at.
So where would you put all the buses?
So the buses, we talked about the bus loop, you know, so I've got the big red arrow coming into the yellow box.
No, I mean for, for having them park.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Yep.
I know, I can understand where that's going to be for a bus loop.
Yep.
But I'm wondering where are we going to put them if we close everything in Gilbert? You don't have enough room for the buses over here.
For like a bus garage, storage? Correct. Yes.
Unless you tear down one of those two buildings.
Yep.
Preferably would be in the second one, the junior, old junior high. Oh, both of them, actually. Something more to contemplate.
Yeah. I think this just kind of gives you a good idea of, you know, whether it could happen. Yeah, I think it's a, from a planning standpoint, you know, it could be a good short-term goal to kind of get a little further down the road for you guys. But I don't think it's, you know, probably the ultimate decision at the end of the day. But I think you could do it.
I guess, I mean, the exercise that we went through with the Gilbert and Evolith and Gilbert or Evolith scenarios, even if we put everything on one campus or the other campus, we still.
Still have to.
The operating cost still wasn't the savings that we're looking to bridge the gap is what it comes down to.
That's right.
At the end of the day, we want to try to balance our budget and operating cost was the ugly thing on the, on the table, right?
Yeah, and last time.
And this didn't get us there unless we did something extreme.
That's right. Yep. So last time I had left you, we had throw that.
Right.
You know, 1.2 mil- or 12 million, what was it that we thought we needed to save?
1.2.
Yeah, 1.2 a year. You know, and so, you know, what does that give you? We can certainly run those numbers, but my guesses would be maybe half of that. You know, you might be looking at 600,000 because some of that transportation cost and, you know, those.
Transportation wasn't that much.
No, transportation, but teachers back and forth running through and, yeah. So, you know, maybe.
I think it was like 600,000 dollars.
Maybe your half, just kind of a shot of the.
For a year, though.
Yep. So it would buy some time, you know, I think it would buy time, but it's not closing the gap, I think.
But meanwhile, we still have to heat the other buildings on the other side.
That's part of the conversation of that. Either way.
We want to, do we want to just preserve buildings or do we want to educate our kids? Okay. I think we need some kind of, I think, still think that we need some kind of a formal or informal cost study of what we would save with this scenario.
I think we have that somewhere in the mess here.
We'll get those next Monday at the study session.
Okay. Okay. That's fine.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you, Katie.
Thanks a lot.
Appreciate it. Okay. Moving on. 12.0 Superintendent's report. I think you have a printout for us even this time.
All right, number one, enrollment. We're, today we're at 993, which is an increase of four over the start of the year, and that is the number that we ended last year on. So it's doing pretty good right now. Staffing, we still have a number of paraprofessionals we're trying to fill. We've had some new students move into the district that require those. Three. Facilities update. I mentioned prior that the hot water tank in the high school is leaking. Randy received a quote last week from a company that was quite a bit more than we were anticipating originally. It was definitely over the 25,000, so our ARI is currently drying up an RFP and we're going to have to go out for bids on that one. When that process is complete, Randy will come and talk, talk you through our options on that one. Range Cornus did come out to take a look at the Franklin roof, the part that's leaking at least up in the southeast corner. And a little over $4,000, they're going to come and put a patch on that, but I will remind you that that is not anywhere near a permanent solution to that problem.
No.
Really childhood. We have 39 in SR4s right now, there's two sections. And we have 25 in SR3s, that is also two sections right now. The SR3 numbers are up from last year and the SR4 numbers are down from last year. Recognition. I'd like to congratulate Coach Roberts and the EG football team for starting the season 4-0 and to Max Roberts for being named MDN prep athlete of the week. Holy cow. Can see again.
Thank you.
MDN for being named the prep athlete of the week this week. If you read the article at all, I mean, I think things are going very well for the team as a whole. Very proud of those boys. Also, congratulations to girls swimming. Ninth grader Carly George broke the school record in the 100 butterfly last week at a 104.21, which is almost two seconds faster than the old record. And eighth grader Mark Harry broke the school record in the 100 breaststroke with a time of 113.43. Upcoming meetings. Next meeting, we're going to have Paul Brainerd, Hope Program Instructor. He'll give the board an update on the progress and on the whole program that's been implemented this year. And Jess Forsman, the District Assessment Coordinator, will give the board a report on the results of the MCA's from last spring. Little update on technology. The transition of network administrator is now complete. We have totally turned it over. You will still see some bills once in a while from CW because we're buying, we're continuing to buy ink from them, but that's it. iPad distribution has been slow due to the transition. I mean, here's some whining a little bit, but they are being handed out this week. New internet connection was completed this summer and the new firewall was just put in a few weeks ago. And so far, it's been really good. We'll see once the iPads are turned on. But all indications are it's going to be a huge improvement. And then finally, after almost, after talking about it for almost a year, we do have the tail presence room up and running. It has been working relatively flawlessly so far with the network upgrade. We are, the class that we are doing this year is a test run as calculus. We have, we're sharing with Moe Niner, our instructor is here, Ms. Peschel. I actually went to visit with her this morning and it's a pretty cool thing. The technology is really, really crystal clear and the voice back and forth is clear. And it's, I think it's going to be a good thing for us in the future. And that's all I have.
Thank you. So is this considered cooperation with MIBs for more money?
Yeah. That should get us at least 20 million.
Go for 30.
Okay. 13.0, four member topics. Tom, we'll start with you. Mike?
I just want to ask Superintendent, in reference to the facilities, I mean, this is something we can talk about more when we get into the facility discussion. But I mean, is this, do you think we should sit down and think about everything that we need to fix again? I mean, we, I think we had one of them conversations about a year ago, but I mean, it seems like we haven't talked about it a while and things are creeping up on us again.
I'd be more than happy to give you a list on Monday.
I mean, I think we need to. I mean, and then to bring then the conversation to our facility study is, you know, like I mentioned before, UNESCO gave us the itemized list of our ventilation system and everything else that we have that are old and antiquated. I mean, all that should be brought to this conversation about our facilities and.
Yeah, we, Randy is certainly very cognizant of it and I'll definitely invite him and he can talk you through it.
So, I mean, I just.
Good idea.
I mean, it's all part of the same conversation because, I mean, we're probably going to have to start making a big decision here shortly and all that's going to be, I mean, I think last meeting we talked something.
20 million dollars over the next four years.
The number was huge to, to bring everything up to date and unless we keep putting fingers on drain leaks, I mean, that ink and.
I was questioned afterwards about that, that figure, but I remind everyone, we've had three different organizations come in here and tell us the same basic thing.
That's what I said. I was telling my wife yesterday.
Didn't come from me.
I have a stack this big of all the facility studies, stuff we've been doing in the last two and a half years. And we could start bringing it and showing people, it's all public. I mean, Tom knows, UNESCO gave us a really thorough state of where our buildings are at.
Well, they, they also came back and was paybacks too. And they would guarantee the paybacks, but.
Well, I mean, that's, that's part of the funding mechanism, but that's not part of the problem, you know? I mean, but it identified some of the problems, right? I mean, and that's what we need to start talking about. So that's all I wanted to do is just bring up.
Sounds like that's a good thing for Monday.
Yeah. Well, have Randy come.
Things we haven't been, the boards haven't been advised prior years, update this stuff, you know? That was a downfall there, you know? This could have been upgraded years ago instead of coming down all at one time, you know?
It's been upgraded over the years.
It is what it is at this stage.
Some of our.
When you start looking at roofs, like half a million dollars just for the Franklin alone. And that's just one of them. We're going to have to do something.
But the other thing is you, you can't go back in time and fix it. You got to deal with it today as the prime, you know?
Okay. Anything else?
Nope, that was.
Okay. Mona?
Nothing.
Mark?
Nothing.
Leon?
Nothing.
Chad? Another mark. Mark, Mark and Mark.
Tell me whatever you want.
Okay. Mr. Chad, how's that? And I have nothing else, so I think we'll go for adjournment. Anyone want to make a motion?
So moved.
Adjournment. Thank you.